The Lamonster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Lamonster, 978-466-1922.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in his whole full dignity and justice for all.
We'll begin with a roll call vote of the armed members of the council, beginning with Council Frida.
I still have a question on how we're going to deal with this before we start the meeting.
We're in the meeting now, we just started.
You just didn't.
So why don't we do a roll call and then we'll deal with the question, no problem with the question. Council Frida?
I guess I'm here.
President.
Dabrowski? Council Feckley?
Present.
Council Bonanza?
Present.
Council Ottinger?
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Councilor David Cormier?
Present.
Okay, eight members are present. Do we have a status and someone share a status on Council Schalfo Zephyr? Have we heard anything whether she's coming tonight or not?
She said she was going to try to make it.
She's going to try to make it, try to make the meeting or try to make it on time?
She's going to try to make it.
Okay, so we're not sure if she's coming tonight? Okay, alright. Um, we, I, we did have calling hours for beloved family gentlemen in town here. I know I was about fifteen minutes ahead of Council Bonanza and I believe she might have been behind you, correct?
Yeah, she was behind us.
I think Mr. Scuzzelli's suggesting she was behind me.
Okay.
I had to cut the line.
Okay. Alright, well there's a couple of options we can take. One of them is to move forward with the meeting or the second option would be to actually go into recess to allow her a professional courtesy if she's coming in a reasonable amount of time. Um, we could do that, um, it's a long calling hour, um...
I'd move to recess based on...
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion for recess?
I'll second that as well.
Okay, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate usual manner.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We're in recess right now. Good night. Um, yeah, I just want to explain the status of calling for the meeting. We had at the last meeting two members, Council Feckley and Council Dabrowski, that were not present. Um, we had a vote taken on the floor and the vote stands. At the, um, we also had a reconsideration requested. The way the parliamentary procedure works, you can do two things. You can either work on it the night of the meeting for reconsideration or you can bring it into the next meeting. Um, I, I wanted to bring it into the next meeting to give all nine councilors a chance to weigh in on probably one of the most challenged pieces of legislation in the Commonwealth that's had an effect upon the city of Lamonster. And unfortunately, um, the person who asked for the suspension, oh, excuse me, for the reconsideration would not be here Monday night, no will another person, Council Schalfo Zephyr, I believe, has indicated to people she would not be here Monday night also. So in the meantime, what's happened is I wanted to move the question forward out of professional courtesy so that the person requesting it could plead, you know, plead their case to the council for a discussion and debate on how it will go from that point. So, uh, the, through the clerk's office, we put together this meeting. Um, it was qualified through, Council Frida had asked a question whether it could be done or not. Um, the, the next day we contacted Council Riley from Copeland Page, city solicitor, who qualified the fact that in fact we can, under our rules, have a special meeting to deal with something that's being challenged as far as a question or reconsideration. So that led to tonight's meeting. Um, I have no idea what your schedules are. I have a hard enough time keeping up my own schedule. So I apologize to anyone that this may be an inconvenience. It's just the way government works and we have to do what we have to do, um, to deal with it in an effective swift way. I do know that this petition has been in front of us going back to the beginning of March and I don't think it's fair to Kristin, who wrote this along with the planning board and a lot of work went into it also with the Ward Four Councilor, to take this and just keep blowing it off, blowing it off, blowing it off. Regardless of what's happening, what happens tonight, you know, we're here this evening. Um, unfortunately, we do have a question, uh, that Council Frida has raised and I'll yield the floor back to her to see if she would like to pursue that.
Absolutely, Mr. President. Rule, uh, rules of procedure, rule one, uh, there are two areas now. First one is the special meetings of the city council shall be held. The call of the mayor is provided in section 2.6b on the call of the council president or on the call of any three members of the city council by written notice delivered in hand or to the place of residence or business of each member in at least forty-eight hours in advance of the time set, which includes notice of the subject to be acted upon at such meeting. I did not receive the meeting. I'm not saying who, who had an issue. Some people in this council got phone calls, some people did not. I did not get a phone call from anybody asking me if tonight was convenient or not. Some people did. But that's not even the issue of my not receiving this. Um, the police department did leave me a message this morning saying they had paperwork to drop off and I told them where I'd be today, but even at that point, it's over the forty-eight hours. The second part of that is, I'm just reading it, is that any special city council meeting, there must be a public forum held prior to the meeting. We didn't do that either. So, you know, I, I just questioned some of the rules, when we follow them, when we don't, whether now according to, um, um, Attorney Riley, we may be able to suspend them. I've been down here and been butchered on rules because the rule applied in a certain way. Now something I think is pretty important and we have the ability to suspend those rules? I, I have a question about that, but I guess that really doesn't matter. But, you know, that's, that's where my position is.
I think it matters. I yield the floor to Council Riley, uh, first of all, to the clerk. Uh, can you just share with us the protocol for process when it came down to serving the councilors?
Sure. Um, as soon as I was told there was the agenda, I had notified the police station, specifically the chief, and he had sent over an officer and I handed him all the envelopes with the labels for each counselor's address along with a sheet, a spreadsheet highlighting each counselor's address a little bit before noon on the sixteenth and he had gone to go to try to hand deliver those in person.
Okay, did you also send out an email?
An email with the agenda was also sent out.
To each one of the councilors?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council Riley?
Uh, see, Mr., uh, Mr. President, um, the, uh, the rule which Council Frida has raised, um, probably I'm sure predates when more and more things are going by email. It does say that for special meetings of the council, uh, there shall be written notice delivered in hand to the residence or business of each member forty-eight hours ahead. So, it's my understanding that at least presumably, uh, email notice went out more than forty-eight hours ahead, but that, um, that with, with at least one member and perhaps others didn't get that, uh, you know, hand-delivered notice which the rule calls for. Um, so with regard to that aspect, it seems to me, and I don't want to, I don't want to keep sounding like the rules aren't important, but, um, because they are, as is your past practice in interpreting them. But, um, but I think you could ask for a suspension of the rules to allow the meeting go, to go forward based on, um, at least what we assume all the members got written notice ahead of time, even though it was not in compliance, uh, with the, you know, the hand-delivery aspect. Uh, Council Frida also raised about the special council meetings requiring a public forum. Uh, I know I, uh, corresponded with the, the city clerk, uh, this morning on that. Um, I did not make the connection frankly that the rules called for it. It wasn't on the agenda, um, and so I'm not quite sure, uh, I mean, I, I guess you would, since that's in the rules, I think you'd have to ask for suspension of rules on that. As an alternative, because both of those things have occurred, um, I guess another way to play it would be to, uh, you know, put off the substantive matter until Monday. You could, um, you could amend the agenda in the morning. That is within forty-eight hours, but there would be an unanticipated matter which the open meeting law, uh, takes into account. So, um, so I think there's two ways to approach this.
Okay. One would be to deal with it and the other one would be to hold off until Monday night?
Correct. Just if, if the councilors may share Council Frida's concerns about, you know, both those, those two issues in rule one, uh, that apparently didn't happen.
Okay. Let me first poll the council, uh, to see how many people received the electronic copy of the agenda. Could you raise your hand, please? Council Feckley, you did not?
I only can't raise my hand.
Oh, okay. Alright. Alright, um, and, and how many of you did not have a police officer come to you, uh, connect with you regarding a hand delivery besides Council Frida?
Within forty-eight hours or, or at any time?
Does that have to be within forty-eight hours?
The rule, the rule states forty-eight hours.
Within forty-eight hours. Okay, when did you get yours, Counselor?
About seven o'clock last night.
Seven o'clock last night?
Yeah.
Okay, Council Feckley?
When I came home today, I'm four o'clock.
Four o'clock today?
Oh, because it was in my mailbox.
Oh, so it wasn't delivered, it was just placed in the mailbox?
That was my personal location.
Okay, right. Council Frida?
No, I'm just raising my hand that I didn't get it.
Okay, so you never connected with a police officer then and they didn't leave one at your house?
I left them a message where I'd be today.
Okay.
And I didn't hit, but today would have been too late anyway.
Right, right, okay. Okay, um, so we have a, we have a few glitches and, um, I'm open for a suggestion from the floor. Um, the first one is, is there a flavor to suspend the rules to be able to deal with this this evening? Council Bonanza?
I would move for suspending the rules in both cases.
In both cases?
Both cases, the, uh, notice requirement as well as the, uh, public forum, the lack of the public forum being noticed on the, uh, agenda. It is a public meeting, of course, posted under the open meeting law. I'm sure the President can suspend, uh, recess the meeting for public comment.
I can do that.
At some juncture, which in my view cures that.
Okay.
And with respect to notice, I think everybody ultimately got notice and that proves it because there's eight of nine of us are here and some, one, one of the one that's absent was trying to make it, so.
Right.
So I would, I would move to suspend the rules with respect to both of those alleged deficiencies.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded. It's been first and second. So the council's heard the recommendation right to suspend both of the rules, uh, to move forward with the meeting tonight. Uh, any comments or questions on the floor? Council Feckley?
Um, the notification issue doesn't bother me as much. I think that's a very good point that the Ward Four Councilor has made that, you know, we all basically found out about it. I mean, it's still a little bit disturbing the way, um, you know, it was initiated, but, um, I'm very concerned about the public forum issue. Uh, I actually noticed that on the, um, the agenda when I, when I saw it today, um, that there was no public forum. I think, as you said, this is probably one of the most important issues that we've had to vote on, you know, in the past couple of years that I can think of. And the fact that there's no public forum, I mean, that's what we're all about. We, we are representing the public and the public should have the right to, to come and speak. So that's very concerning to me. I'm, I'm thinking that, I, I don't even know if we can suspend that. I mean, I, in deference to our city solicitor here, I'm, I'm wondering if that might come back and, and bite us.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Bonanza?
It, it's a public meeting, uh, which clearly means the public can participate. Um, and we can ask, uh, Attorney Riley, I mean, there's nothing wrong. It, it, in the best world, of course, it wouldn't have been better if it was on the agenda, but there are members of the public here, um, and certainly, uh, we can go into recess and take any public comment, um, that people want to give, um, that are present. Again, it is a public meeting, uh, which means public input. The fact that the document doesn't say public forum, in my view, is not fatal to us proceeding with a public meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Ottinger?
Just a question, um, this will be, if it is reconsidered and will be on the agenda for Monday, correct, for a second reading?
Not necessary, no.
No, no?
No. No, that's, that's moving way too fast.
Okay.
So the protocol, the protocol for tonight would be that if in fact it is the desire of the council to deal with the question this evening for reconsideration and vote on it, even if it passed, if it, if it, if it did not receive six votes, it's still dead.
Right.
Um, if it did receive six votes, the second reading will not be Monday night. It'll be at another time to be determined.
But there would be a public meeting, a public forum before the second reading?
Absolutely.
So that would...
Because that would be in a regular meeting.
Reading, right. So that would be...
Yeah.
Satisfy the public forum?
Correct.
Section, I think.
Yeah. I plan on addressing that this evening too, so we'll work, we'll work backwards as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Council Dabrowski?
Um, I, I, I think the public forum is important, I, but, uh, um, there was a opportunity with a public forum when the initial legislation was passed and then there, I, I presume there was an opportunity at the meeting that I missed and then there'll be an opportunity at the second reading.
Correct.
So I, I mean, given those circumstances, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable going forward tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other last comments? Council Frida?
Whatever we do, which I'm sure we're going to suspend the rules, but I would like the city solicitor to make a clear statement that these rules can be amended, they can be suspended, because this is totally inconsistent with the way this council has, has operated for years. I've been here almost thirty and this is not how we've operated ever on this council. We follow the rules and somebody brings something up, everybody goes back to the rule and says, "Don't, it's not what it says." "Nope, that's not what it says." So now we can suspend the rules and we can carry something over to the next time. So are these rules any good?
Attorney, if you'd like to address any of that, you can.
I guess, I guess that's my question.
Certainly.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, yeah, as I said, I don't want to minimize the rules. As you say, they've...
But they are minimized.
They've been there a long time. Um, the, the council adopted these rules, they can be amended. Uh, there's a procedure for that though, it's not on the fly. But I know, at least in some times that I've been here, perhaps not as substantive an issue, but that the, um, that the council has suspended the rules to, I don't know, change the order of things are taken up or what have you. Um, I, I would say that this, this body, um, has that authority. There's nothing in the revised ordinances or the charter that says it can't be done. You know, again, I don't want to, I don't want to say that this should happen every night or, or on every issue. Um, you know, that's, that's for the, the members to consider if something really is, would just be inappropriate to suspend the rules. But as far as, you know, does the, the body have the authority to do that? I would say it does.
Have we...
Council Frida, you still have the floor if you want it?
I have another question after, but I'll defer to Council Bonanza.
Council Bonanza?
Have we not suspended the rules to allow lesser, lesser notice than required by law on numerous occasions to put agenda items on? Is that, is it, am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Any other comments or questions? Council Frida?
While we're talking about suspending the rules, I also want to make it known that, um, I submitted a petition for a moratorium, um, that I asked to have put on for tonight. It was refused to have it put on because it was declared it was not an emergency. I don't believe this is an emergency either that we're having this meeting. So I, I'm not quite sure why one was not an emergency and one is. But when we talk about suspending the rules and we talk about following the rules, and I know it's a presidential discretion to put something on and not put it on, this was pushed to Monday and, and actually Monday is a moot point if it's voted on tonight. Doesn't matter if it's on Monday night. I put that petition in so that we would have something to fall back on before we even had this, this discussion on whether we would be protected in the community until we had a discussion on what our next step was going to be. So I, I guess in that regard, I'm a little disappointed that I wasn't allowed to be on. I really don't think we would have the votes anyway, but the point is I did, I did ask to put that on and it was denied.
Just for public...
So I want that clear.
Public transparency, because you and I haven't had a discussion on this. The, the rationale on my point was that this petition that potentially could be before us tonight is not going to pass until we deal with your petition Monday night. So whether that moves forward or not, if it moves forward tonight, it just goes from first reading to second reading and it will not be on the calendar for Monday night's agenda. It'd be on at a later date. So what would happen is it's not to slight what you're doing. I just wanted to deal with one item tonight and that was the essential question raised at the last meeting. Counselor, that's the truth. That's how I looked at it. Any other comments or questions? I have a motion on the floor by Council Bonanza, Council David Cormier seconded. It's a motion to suspend the rules for rules number one and two and move forward with the meeting. We'll do this by a roll call vote. We need a simple majority of five councilors to say, or actually four, uh, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Frank Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Mark Bonanza.
Yay.
Council Gail Feckley.
Nay.
Council John Dabrowski.
Yay.
Council Claire Frida.
Nay.
I should record as yay by a vote of, uh, six to two, we're going to move forward. Okay. So we have a question of reconsideration. I'll yield the floor to, is it a question on process or protocol?
Yes, process.
Go ahead, please, go ahead.
There, I think maybe some of the councilors have some questions they'd like to address to the city solicitor before we, uh, address the, uh, whatever it is.
The reconsideration?
Reconsideration, drew a blank. Would that be proper?
Um, he's here as, the city solicitor's here as a reference point.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't disagree that we should probably get those questions out of the way before we engage in a debate. I wouldn't want to stop in the middle of a debate and go back to the city solicitor back into a debate. So I think that's a fair question, Council Ottinger.
Okay.
So if there's no objection to that? Okay, do you have a question, sir?
Uh, I actually have a couple of them, if you...
Go ahead.
It doesn't matter.
Please, you have the floor, take your time.
Okay, thank you. There's been a lot of discussion by the CCC regarding the restrictions of, uh, you know, the, uh, where the marijuana facilities are located. Do you feel that this, uh, ordinance that's before us tonight will be too restrictive the way it's written right now? Do you think it'll be a problem with the CCC?
Uh, no, I don't. The, the CCC actually doesn't review the, the ordinances.
Mm-hmm.
They, uh, if they get an application that somebody wants to open at 12 Main Street at Lamonster, they're going to contact the city and say, you know, "What's your zoning at 12 Main Street? What's allowed, what's not?" But I, I, in, in any event, when this petition came in as it was going to go to the planning board, uh, I reviewed it. I, I didn't find anything that was jumped out at me as problematic.
Is too, too restrictive?
Right.
Okay. One of the questions I've had since we've started debating this issue is the issue of private clubs, uh, like they have in Worcester down on Water Street where you can go in there, bring your own, uh, marijuana in and smoke it in a private club like that. Uh, I was just looking at, uh, section 105.6.2, uh, item, wait a second, if I find it again?
Can you read it for me, please?
I will.
You don't have it in front of you, right?
I did not have it in front of me, no.
Uh, Counsel, I'll give him a copy of that.
Okay.
What was the, uh, the section again?
It's 105.6.2, number I. Where it says under the special permit, um, it lists all the things that would be covered under the special permit. It's on the second page, it's on the next page over.
It's the fifth page, it's not numbered, but...
Oh, oh, okay. Alright, I think I have it now. The traffic impact report?
No, that's, uh, no, it's, uh, any other type of licensed marijuana related business for recreational marijuana, it's under the...
Oh, oh, sorry, wrong one.
Special permit.
Okay.
Types of special permits.
Types of special permits. Would that cover, cover a private club also?
Um...
Kind of a catch-all, but...
Well, the, the, the issue, there's sort of two kinds of private clubs which people are talking about. You know, as you know, when this question passed in 2016, um, it allowed, um, personal consumption, you know, in your own house. Um, it could be restricted so it's not on public property, uh, but basically having it and consuming it became legal. And so I think the, the one you're referring to in Worcester, I mean, I'll call it a loophole because if the owner of private property allows people to come on and consume this product, which... which is now legal to consume, as long as you're not out in the street, that's not something, it's not something which the CCC is planning to license, because the, the club is not selling it. Obviously, they couldn't sell it without a license from the state. They're just kinda opening their doors and allowing private parties to come in and sit and use it. So, I don't, I mean, I don't, you don't need anything from the state for that, and I'm not, I'm not sure that this zoning ordinance would require a permit for it. You know, it may sort of depend on, on how they work this, you know, are they trying to slide in, charging people for something? I don't know. But as long as they're not selling it, it's not, it's not a marijuana business, put it that way. This is distinct from the social consumption clubs, which some people wanna open, which is you come in, they sell you the product, and you sit there and take it. That, the, there may be some time down the road when the state is gonna license one of those things, but they put that on the back burner for a year.
Okay. But at this point, if someone wanted to come down and open up a storefront on Main Street and say it's a private club, they could so do so, do so.
If they're not selling marijuana, all they're doing is allowing someone to bring in their own, I don't think, I don't think that would violate any statute, I don't think it would be inconsistent with, at least certainly not the current bylaws, I'm sorry, ordinances that the city has.
And it wouldn't be covered by the special permit. They wouldn't have to apply for a special permit, because it's not a marijuana, recreational marijuana facility.
I believe the way the statute and the CCC's regulations, I, I think they would say that's, that's not a marijuana business that this law, you know, takes into consideration. That's why I say it's kind of a loophole.
Okay. All right. And the last question is 105.6.3, item F, under the special permit?
Yes.
It says adequately addressed issues of vehicular and pedestrian, pedestrian traffic, circulation, parking, et cetera. Would we, as a city, under the special permit, be able to ask a marijuana facility if there was gonna be heavier traffic, to mitigate that traffic by widening the road or putting in access or something like that? Would that be covered under a...
I think as a, as a general matter, I mean, a special permit, the nice thing about it is you can add conditions. My recollection on some, on a completely different subject, but where a, a city or town tried to require a, you know, a lane to be added on the road or something, it got taken to court, and the court said, "You don't, you know, this, this party that's applying for the permit has no control over the street, they can't decide to do this. Only the, you know, only the city, or perhaps even a state road, can do that." So that particular one, I think would, I don't think you could force as a condition to widen the road or, or put in a turning lane or something. Some other sorts of things, you know, something about the, you know, put in a police detail at times, or something more along those lines, that the party does have control over. You know, we've seen conditions like that before.
Thank you, that's, those were the only questions I had, Mr. President.
Good. Thank you, thank you. Council Dobrowski?
Just wanna weigh on that, weigh in on that last question. I, I think if something impacted traffic that much, I mean, that, that certainly would be grounds to deny a special permit. I mean, it's not a, it's not a matter of right, you know, there's, there's, there's elements that you've gotta satisfy, and if it's, if it's gonna create that kind of havoc, that, that certainly would be within the special permit granting authorities' realm to, to deny it. So I just, I just wanted to chime in on that.
Right, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Through the President, you know, in that case, you know, if we look at the prime wellness facility that we've discussed in the past, the initial traffic flow was estimated at something like 500 cars a day, and now I believe it's up to about 1,100 for a recreational facility. Would that be reason for denying that special permit? Without some condition to alleviate that?
I mean...
Council Benanza?
Can I just say, that's not before us.
Right.
I think we're going down a slippery slope
Right.
To address a specific case.
Right.
But certainly, any facility that comes before us for a special permit, they have to satisfy all of the special permit criteria. As Council Dobrowski said, it's not, it's not an unfettered right. They have to convince us, six members here, that they have addressed all of those concerns that are laid out in the ordinance satisfactorily, and if they don't, you know, we can certainly, we earn our rights to turn them down. So we could take into account, case by case, the specifics, and obviously, traffic would be important in any, any special permit. You know, it's traditionally a special permit classification or criteria that the council's gonna wanna address, and there would be many others as well. But we gotta take them one by, case by case, as they come in front of us.
It's certainly an essential question, in any, in any special permit.
Thank you.
It's a good question.
One last comment, if you don't mind?
Well, I'd rather not.
Okay.
We'll keep, I wanna hear the comment, but let's hear it when we, we're back in discussion.
That's okay, fine.
Okay, I appreciate your patience. Any other questions for Council Riley? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, excuse me?
I was gonna make a motion to...
Okay, all right, before you do that, okay, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask right now, permission from the council to recess, to see if there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the council.
Okay, I'll make a motion for recess.
Seconded?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Would any member of the audience like to address the council on this matter?
Yes, I would. Can I just have about two minutes, please?
Would any other member, while this gentleman's planning, any other member like to address the council? Second time? Okay, when you're ready, sir, thank you. Counsel, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Tim Hardigan.
You know what you're talking on, and then if you can, try to keep your comments to around two minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, no problem, Council President. Tim Hardigan, 19 PSF. So, the, the way the law is written right now, the zoning is pretty cut and dry. I mean, it's not like, I don't feel like we should be implementing harsh zoning at all. It's the, the way the CCC has written this, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry, there's no reason to implement excessive zoning requirements on this. I mean, to get a license, there's, you have to go through a, a lot of steps. I've been working on this for about five years right now, and I think Leamis has an opportunity here. I mean, there's no point to be, prohibition is over. This has affected a lot of people in this community for years, and I realize that, that you guys have a, a moral responsibility to protect the community, but we need to treat this like alcohol, in my opinion. And for too long, it's been, marijuana in particular, has been looked down upon, and I think everybody here knows the medicinal value of the plant. And I think as adults, we can discuss this intelligently, instead of scaring the public. So I just feel like the zoning requirements, I mean, you can't be anywhere close to a school, you can't be anywhere close to a church, and like I said, we just need to treat this like we would treat Wyman's Liquors, and that's the other thing. So, I read in the paper yesterday that you guys wanna plan the, or perhaps cap the number of establishments or whatever, I mean, you guys didn't do that to Pat Wyman back in the day. This is gonna create a whole new class of revenue for people that didn't have it before, and it's gonna create a lot of millionaires. The question is whether you guys are gonna hinder that or welcome it, because the bottom line is that money's gonna come into the city, and you guys can use this tax money for beneficial things. I've been trying to put, fix the Leamis basketball courts in Leamis there for over a year now, and I actually put a whole plan together that I shared with the [inaudible] tonight, and I tried to solicit funds myself to get this project done, and the bottom line is, it still has gone nowhere. The courts in Leamis there haven't been updated in fifty or sixty years. It's pathetic. There's cracks all over the place, the nets are down, these things haven't been updated in fifty or sixty years. It's ridiculous. So let's use some of this cannabis money to improve the city. So I just urge the council here in front of me to be responsible about this, and not be puritans. The bottom line is prohibition is over, the people voted for this, and you have to, you do represent the people that didn't vote against it, but the people that voted against it supersedes it. And I ask you, and I urge you, number one, these establishments are not gonna be selling to minors, nobody wants that. I don't want my kid drinking beer, my underage son drinking beer, I don't want my underage son smoking cannabis either, but let's deal with it as the same, 'cause that's what it is. And so, I just ask you guys to please go back twenty years in your life right now, and remember what you, remember how, remember twenty years ago where you were at. And I just, you know, there's no reason that we can't, I mean, Jen Flanagan's from Leamis there, she's not gonna let anything bad happen. That's why we have the commission, I know three of the, I know three of the five cannabis commissions from the CCC, my lawyer court wrote the bill. I told Council Marsha in this about four years ago, "If you guys had any questions, to come see me," nobody called me. But let's use some of this cannabis money to fix the courts in Leamis there. Football's gonna be dead, Leamis has put all the money into football for the past twenty, thirty years. There's not even gonna be football in thirty years, 'cause of the concussions. Let's put money into the basketball program, fix all the courts in Leamis there, rename the court at Pop Warner Field after Marco Solsky, and that's how we deal with the cannabis business. And we use the, we use the tax revenue to benefit us, instead of scaring everybody. I mean, it's, it's over. Prohibition's over, so, counsel, I'm sorry to take up too much of your time, but I had to get this off my chest, because no one else is here, no one else gives, no one else cares. So I'm here because I care, and we need to address this, but we need to do it responsibly and not scare anybody, 'cause it's over. Weed's legal now, so stop scaring everybody, please, thank you for your time.
No apology is necessary, Tim. Thank you for addressing the council, we appreciate it. One more time, I'll go to the public, if anyone would like to address the council. If not, the council's back in session, I'll yield the floor to Counselor David Cormier.
Thank you very much, I'd, I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration of the adoption of the first reading of this ordinance, and I can read it, since it has not been read tonight, if you'd like.
Please.
Okay, it's relative to the reconsideration.
One second, please.
Yep.
What's gonna happen is, this is what I'm going to do. If there's a motion on the floor for reconsideration, and it's seconded and it passes, it'll be gone, it'll go back to legal affairs, and at that point, they can read it, so you don't have to worry about reading it.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
So I make a motion that we, for the reconsideration of the adoption of the first reading of this ordinance?
I'll second it.
Have a second by Counsel, Counsel...
She beat me.
She beat you on that?
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Pauline Cormier seconded.
I second.
Are there any questions on the motion? All those in favor, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger. Counsel Benanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Nay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Nay.
I shall record as yay by a vote of three, six to two, is now before the council. I'm gonna yield the floor to the legal affairs chair, if you can read the ordinance in its first reading, and then I'll yield the floor to each member of the, of your committee for a yay or a nay, based, or for the time, or table, or leave, withdraw, without prejudice, and then I'll go back to those respectful counselors for comment. Counsel Dobrowski, you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. This is reconsideration of the first reading of an ordinance. This is relative to the reconsideration of the adoption of the first reading of the ordinance relative to amending Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leamis zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. This is legal affairs petition 40-18, and I would remind the council that there is a two-thirds vote that is necessary.
That's in point of order. Counsel Shalaful Zephyr is not present tonight, but it still requires six votes of the whole council, not the present members.
Correct. My, my personal recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, which is consistent with, with my vote on the underlying ordinance, and I'd ask you to poll my committee...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Frida, you're the clerk?
Nay.
Nay. Counsel Benanza, third member?
Yay.
Yay. Mr. Chairman, you have a recommendation?
The recommendation of the legal affairs committee is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance.
Counsel has heard the recommendation to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counsel Frida?
This isn't so much a vote against the ordinance, I think it's more against the way this was handled. To have a special meeting, this is not an emergency, to be having a special meeting tonight, because counselors were polled and we figure out who's gonna be here and who isn't gonna be here Monday night. I mean, that's totally not the way, this is why people hate government. It's exactly why people don't like government. And I think it's an insult to some of us who never get a phone call, never got, and I understand, some of us aren't part of the conversation, and I understand who is and who isn't, and I understand how the process went, but you know what, this is, it could have waited till Monday night, but then we wouldn't have somebody here, and we probably wouldn't have the six votes. So unfortunately, that's the way it went, and that's the way it is. But I just think it's unfortunate that that's the way we're doing business.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Benanza?
Yes, this is the product of nearly a year's worth of work, and as we heard during the public portion of this meeting, when the president solicited comment, this is a hot-button topic in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there is no question about that. And we are left with the responsibility as city counselors to address a balance. We must take into account the will of the voters, and as we all know, in this city, 51% of the people voted in favor of the referendum, and put us in a category that would make it very difficult to ban marijuana in Leamis there. I know the counselors have spoken in the past, and I don't wanna speak for anybody specifically, but I know many of us have some real questions, reservations, and concerns about marijuana in our community. When I helped Kristen Kelly, our former planning director, draft this ordinance with the assistance of Counsel O'Reilly, we again tried to strike a balance between 51% of the people who voted in favor of the referendum, and 49% of the people who voted against the referendum. We drafted something that addressed two principal policy questions that we had to answer as elected officials with respect to marijuana. How many facilities, and where are they gonna be located? With respect to the first prong of those policy discussions, we selected the minimum number of facilities in the community, as respected dispensaries, something that was within our control under the law. Then we had to determine where we're gonna put these facilities. One of the councils this evening asked the city solicitor whether the ordinance that was drafted is too restrictive. It is certainly restrictive, and as I suggested before publicly, I think it's about as restrictive as you possibly can get. It's still past muster with respect to an accessibility argument that somebody might have who wants to locate a marijuana facility in this community. It omits the commercial zone as one of the places to put a marijuana facility, and I think there's a sensitivity among many counselors, and again, I won't speak for anybody, but I think there's a sensitivity about having children exposed to marijuana businesses that would be, of course, much more visible in the commercial zone. That being said, to make this more restrictive than it is, I think would, would put us dangerously close to potentially litigation and challenges by people who wanted to establish a marijuana business. So I think this ordinance strikes a balance, and that's what we worked hard to do. As you know, right now, we don't have a planning director, unfortunately, Ms. Kelly, for personal reasons with respect to her growing family and other demands on our time, had to leave, and we are in the process of selecting a new planning director. If we were to go, go back to the drawing board on this, that would make a, make this process even more challenging than it was with her assistance, and believe me, she worked very hard on this. I, this has been before the council a number of times, I wanna say almost a half a dozen times. Each one of those times, I suggested that the two policy questions were, A, how many Each one of those times, I suggested that the two policy questions were, A, how many dispensaries, and B, where. I would, as probably all you can tell, I've advocated for this, I would like to see this pass, I want to see our community protected, I don't want a delay on this. Delay, I think, serves no interest. It certainly doesn't serve the interest of the 51% of the people who voted in favor of the referendum, many of those people have been down here before, they don't want this delayed, they voted, they want their will given force and effect, and I don't think it serves the interest of the 49% of the people who probably want some protection with respect to these particular facilities. So, I think this is appropriate, it's a living document, like every other zoning ordinance, doesn't mean that it can't be amended in the future, as we learn more about this business and as things change. I have to remind the council, this is not a circumstance where, because it's not in our use category, that a business can be refused without an ordinance. We have one dispensary already, and they have the right to convert that license under the CCC regulations, and I think this ordinance is absolutely necessary to protect the city, and I would humbly ask each counselor to thoughtfully deliberate on this and post a yea vote.
Thank you, Council Bonanza. Council David Cormier.
Thank you very much. First of all, Mr. President, I want to thank you for calling the special meeting tonight, because I'm the counselor that can't be here Monday night, and I think that waiting till at least the first meeting in August is too long to leave the city wide open to what we've, you know, been, left wide open to. So at least this way here, this law could be in place by, you know, sometime later in August. I'm not gonna, you know, repeat a lot of the things that the counselor from Ward Four said, I do agree with a lot of what he said. As I've said before, I think that this, this zoning strikes a balance, you know, it allows the wishes of the people that choose to have marijuana as a, something that they can purchase in the city legally, from a, through, you know, a state, what's the word I'm trying to look at, an approved business that the cannabis commission approves for the city. You know, I think it strikes a balance, and it gives them a place to, to purchase it, but it also protects the people in the city that don't necessarily want it on every street corner. So, I do thank you for putting this forward, so that we can get it taken care of sooner than later.
Thank you. Any other comments on the floor? Council Pauline Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President, and with all due respect to the counselor at large, I do think it's an emergency. I think this is something that's been worked on, it's been something that's been hashed out, and I think the longer we go as a city without having this zoning, this ordinance in place, the more at risk we are as a city, as a council, and not, and losing control over it. So I, again, I will reiterate what my fellow councilors have said, let's get this in place. None of us are all that much in favor of this, but let's get it in place, let's protect ourselves, let's protect the citizens of the city.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Council Frank Ottinger.
Just a thought, and I think, I don't think there's anyone that knows, or knows, I think everyone, I should say, I think everyone knows my position on the marijuana issue. I really wish we weren't sitting here debating this issue tonight. If not, I would be sitting up at Salisbury Beach with a glass of wine and a steak right now, but that's another story. But the bottom line is, you know, it's something that's coming before us, 51% of the people voted for it, and we have to, you know, yield to that, that majority vote, that's what democracy is all about. But by the same token, the 49% that voted against it really have to be protected. I think there's some real concerns, as I've addressed a couple of them here tonight with the questions I sent to the city solicitor, and I think the gentleman that spoke in the public forum did the same thing that the marijuana industry did when they, you know, got the vote in favor of the marijuana, but everything said, you know, the increased revenue is gonna be spent on increased problems. He says it's no worse than alcohol, I say it's no better than alcohol. It's gonna be just the same type of problems. We're gonna be facing those problems, but it is the law, we do have to respect the voters, and after the, with the special permit requirement in the ordinance as it is right now, I would urge the councilors to vote for the ordinance.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the floor? Council Frida.
Yeah, just, just to make a point, we've done a really good job down here in, in speaking about this ordinance, and scaring the public and thinking they're not protected. They're not protected if we don't do anything else. They would have been protected like some 200 communities across the state are protected with a moratorium that could have allowed us to have discussion. The counselor at large across from me had to ask how many questions of the city solicitor tonight? The city solicitor wasn't here, you'd be voting blindly tonight, not knowing exactly what those answers to those questions are? I think...
A point of order, I don't think he'd be voting blindly.
Well, not having the answers anymore.
I think he's just looking for qualifications on what he's thinking.
If I may?
It's a big difference. I'll yield the floor to you, because I didn't like that question.
You know, I... I respect your opinion, Counselor, but I would not have voted blindly on this, had I not got clarification on those two questions, I probably would have voted against it tonight, just so you understand.
Council Frida, go ahead. Continue, please.
The point I'm making is that it's not fair to sit here and tell the public, unless we adopt this ordinance, we have no protection, because that's not the case. You want to push the ordinance, that's fine, I get it, we've all had positions on everything, but be honest about it, and let people know that this wasn't a case of, we don't do this, we're gonna be in real trouble, because that's not how it goes. And that I would not have, I would not be voting against it if there was a chance that we wouldn't be protected somehow. And I think Attorney Riley can tell you that a moratorium would have protected us, you know, very easily, as far as the ordinance goes. So, I guess I'm just very disappointed that we keep harping on the fact that we need to protect. We also, if you look into most of these communities, that voted 51, 49, 53, all these communities, the majority of those now in their own communities have voted against it, because when it comes to having a discussion about their own community, it's completely different than what they did on the state. So, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't want to pick as a ward counselor which 51% of the public I'd want to represent, as opposed to the 49, which one, which one do you want to represent? I think there's a real disservice to have a discussion without having all the facts. So, that's just my opinion.
Thank you for your opinion. Council Feckley.
I would actually like Attorney Riley to address that question of what kind of danger would the City of Lemus be in if we had waited till the August meeting, and this is not to now, when I'm saying Attorney Riley, because I just by a fluke learned about this meeting tonight. So, if I had not learned it by fluke, you would have had two councilors not here. What would have been the difference between tonight and Monday night, not having two councilors here?
I'll answer that question. Monday night, there won't be two councilors there.
Right.
The one sitting to your left, Council Shalifos Zephyr, I think, has indicated, is that correct? She will not be here Monday night, on vacation, maybe?
Right.
And Council Cormier is also on vacation?
Right.
So we'd be in the same boat.
And so, as I said, I just by fluke learned about it, so there was a very good chance that I wasn't gonna make it either. So, my question now, back to Attorney Riley, would be what kind of danger would the City of Lemus be in if we waited until the first meeting in August, when hopefully we can have a full council?
We're in a debate right now, does anyone have a question, a problem with a question being asked? Okay, Counselor.
Three, Mr. President. I mean, I personally wouldn't use the word danger, but, you know, there's, there's a process under the law for a zoning ordinance to be amended, which is what you're debating now. It has to go through your readings, has to get approved, goes to the mayor, gets hypothetically approved by the mayor, then there's a publication requirement that the clerk's office would take care of, and only when that's all put to bed is that on the books. And so, the, you know, what, what could happen, since the state is out there looking at applications, is somebody, and I don't know if anyone who's looking in Lemus there, I don't know what stage they're at in the licensing, but if they were to get a license approved by the state, or I'm sorry, if they had an application in place, they file it with the Cannabis Control Commission, and everything they're supposed, supposed to have there is there, the Cannabis Control Commission would mark that date, they would contact the city and says, what, what zoning do you have on the books right now, for this kind of business at this location? And so, if this gets adopted, then you've got, you know, these detailed special permit things, if, requirements. If not, and it's a, you know, manufacturing facility, then it would have to get what you already have in your zoning ordinance for manufacturing facilities, which may or may not be as detailed.
All right, thank you. I just wanted that to be clarified for the public, because the word danger had been bandied about, you know, quite a bit the past couple or three days. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll yield the floor to the clerk. You've only been in the office for a little over a week now, have you had any inquiries?
Yes.
How many? Five. Five inquiries for the sale of recreational marijuana in the City of Lemus there. Thank you. Council Bonanza.
Mr. President, I will tell you that Kristen Kelly and I spent a lot of time agonizing over dates, and looking at the process and how quickly we could get this done. And that, that, in my view, we can use whatever word you want, but we are under the gun.
Right. We had that discussion the night it was brought up on the floor of the council, I recall it very clearly, about a timeline, we had to try to do something, something was gonna be done. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Council Dobrowski.
I think it's important to note that we had, we debated this issue with the full council, and the petition passed six to three, and then what followed...
Excuse me, Counselor Feckley, you may want to listen to this, if you put your phone away, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
In the, what followed was a first reading of the ordinance, at which two of us were not present, myself being one of them, so I'm grateful that we had a reconsideration, because, you know, there's, there's an argument that this thing could have gone by the wayside and, and not on the merits. So, you know, I'm grateful for the reconsideration, whether, whether we voted up or we voted down, at least there's an opportunity for the full council to be here, and I know Council Shalifos Zephyr presumably is still trying to be here, I know she's at the, at the wake of a dear friend, but I just felt that was important to say.
Thank you very much. Any closing comments or remarks? Okay, the floor is closed for discussion, we're now gonna take this to a vote, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Feckley.
Nay.
That's a nay recorded for Council Feckley. Council Dobrowski.
I vote yay.
That's a yay for Council Dobrowski. Council Frida?
Nay.
That's a nay for Council Frida. Council David Cormier?
Yay.
That is a yay for Council David Cormier. Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
That is a yay for Council Pauline Cormier. Counselor Frank Ottinger?
Yay.
That is a yay for Council Ottinger. Council Bonanza?
Yay.
That's a yay for Council Bonanza, and as the council president, Ward Five Counselor, I wish to be recorded as yay. Thank you. So by the, by a vote of six to two, the first reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Do we have to set a hearing date on that?
Yes, we do.
Okay. You have the date? It won't be Monday night?
No.
Second reading will get pushed into August. August 13th, Counsel, does that work for you?
Yeah, we just need a time. We need to set the date and the time for the hearing. So...
What time do you want to give the hearing?
I would say we should probably start it at seven o'clock. Does that work?
Makes sense. Seven o'clock?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to establish a hearing for seven o'clock on August 13th. All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven, excuse me, eight to nothing, the hearing date has been established. I'll yield the floor back to the city solicitor. Are we all set? Protocol, everything okay?
I believe so.
Okay, good. Okay, motion adjourned?
So moved.
Seconded. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.